First of all, we apologize for the shortness of any notice. There's a lot of things moving quickly today. The intent was to have this recorded today. And tomorrow, we will have a special call meeting at four o'clock same time here, which will also be recorded in case anyone had any questions about what we were discussing and the purpose of the meeting. This is basically a workshop. I certainly have not participated in a county declaration of emergency to this type of extent. I know you haven't, Commissioner Patterson.
No.
Anything arisen during your eight years before, Mr. Johnson?
I think we had to update this at one point, maybe six years ago.
This is the first time we've been able, as a board, to set together because obviously, if decisions are to be made, we all need to have the same information. I've had the benefit of some of conference calls and meetings this last week or two to get additional information. So I think this time, I would open it up to the post commissioners. I think discussing legal parameters of what we're looking at is probably first and foremost. So I'll leave that up to either you, Commissioner Patterson, or Commissioner Johnson to talk to Ms. Dawson, see what's all involved legally, what we can do, what we can't do, what those limits are.
Well, I'll go ahead and start off. I've had a lot of concerns from our citizens about our rental property and what we can and we can't do as far as restricting all the people from out of town coming here and subsequently putting our citizens at risk with coronavirus. So, Ms. Dawson, if you've got any clarification, what we can't do, can't do as far as restricting the minimums?
You cannot. As more and more counties in the state have shelter in place, and that restricts the people that are moving. You can restrict rental on houses that accommodate more than 10 people because that violates the state mandate that we do not have more than 10 people together. Under 10 people, they have closed Tybee, they have closed Jekyll, which is a state-owned facility, they have closed St. Simon's except unless you live there. But other than that, there is no place in the state of Georgia that has restricted lodging providers if they are under the 10.
But that doesn't say that we can or can't. I mean, we've got a special situation here as far as we're inland. What you talked about was out, beaches and so forth, and it's special to the whole state. So what, do we have that type of authority or not?
If this county, at this moment in time, you do not because you have not declared a state of emergency. But if the county declares a state of emergency, and you can issue a directive that says shelter in place, you can say what is an essential business and what isn't an essential business. Essential businesses have to be allowed to continue on under some degree.
Sure.
Therefore, it's just like, say, you know, some CPA's office might be essential businesses, some law offices might, some real estate offices might not be.
In your professional opinion, what is the rentals? Are they essential or non-essential?
Well, you have to have some lodging available if you're going to have commercial traffic through here.
I'm not worried about the traffic.
No, I'm talking about a trucker coming in that might need to spend the night that's brought in stuff to the hospital. I'm talking about utility workers that might be here because, I mean, in a pandemic, you still have to, it's not like a tornado where trees went down, but you still have to have lodging available to, you know, for whatever purposes.
Would they not be able to give their driver's license or something that says they are half freight or, you know?
Oh, yeah, I'm just saying, you have to, my question is this, Mr.?
We're talking about the tourists primarily.
Right, and I understand that, Mr. Patterson. What I'm saying is, you have to be able to, you can discourage, you can prohibit over 10 because the governor and the federal government has said that. Under 10, you become, you have to have balance. If you say none, then you don't have lodging for utility people that might be in here, extra medical people. If you say, okay, under these circumstances, then you've got to define what the circumstances are, is what I'm saying.
Right, and we could do that.
You could do that.
We could say limited to blah, 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 blah.
Correct. Now, the second thing is, if forcibility, I mean, you could ask, we don't have the sheriff here, but we're not going to be arresting anybody for this, there would be citations issued.
Correct.
We cannot restrict travel. I know that Graham County, North Carolina, very close to us, has restricted travel. I have talked to no one that understands how a county government is restricting travel on a U.S. highway. State of North Carolina, the state of Georgia was in that war, and our side lost. We cannot restrict travel on a federal highway.
I don't think that would be necessary.
And everything we do as a county applies to the unincorporated areas of the county unless the cities can enact their own. I believe they are in a board to be, I think Blue Ridge is meeting this, I'm sorry, Blue Ridge is meeting tomorrow, but Casel is meeting this afternoon. And nothing that we do impacts the school system. School systems are automatically exempted.
Right. But you said what we would do would impact Blue Ridge?
No, that would, it would not unless they chose to adopt ours on their own.
Blue Ridge do a case deal.
Correct. We cannot make them adopt ours.
Okay.
Like Floyd County, Rome, Cave Springs, and they have one more little municipality over there, and they all did a joint one. But there's no requirement that there be a joint one. City of Atlanta has one, Fulton County hasn't done one yet.
Okay, thank you.
So in essence, what we're speaking of here is the lots, the influx of people leaving other areas. I mean, what I've noticed since Friday is, I mean, there's a huge number of out-town plates, state plates for southern counties, neighboring counties. I know my concern is, with all the people, they may be fleeing from these larger cities to make it to a less populated area. The, you know, they're still using our facilities, our grocery stores. If they need medical attention, they're using our EMS services, police force, you know, it's a very sticky situation, in my opinion. I mean, my idea would be to try to figure out how to try and convince people to stay where they're at, just like we've all been asked to do already by the federal government, the president, the governor, all the way down. I just don't, I don't think, I don't know. One of my concerns is, whatever we pass, is how is it going to be enforced anyway? If anything at all is passed, how is it to be enforced?
I think one of the things that needs to be considered, or at least everybody needs to be aware of, you could say shelter in place, all right? What we, we have approximately 1,400 rental cabins. We have approximately 4,500 to 5,000 second homes. So let's take, let's say we aren't going to have any rental cabins open for business anywhere. That doesn't remove those 1,500 cabins from our secondary population because those are all owned by somebody.
Right.
Roswell, Sumter County, wherever. So if they come in, one of the things that will be very hard to figure out on the front end is whether or not those people are owners occupying their own property or whether or not it's a rental. Now, we'll know that next quarter, when we get a rental tax return if they file it correctly. That's the only way you would know. I will tell you that Dr. Miller, Dylan Miller, who is on our Board of Health in a conversation, conference call that some of us were on earlier this morning, said, you know, we should actively discourage travel at this point in time. This is not Thanksgiving weekend when our drugstores and our grocery stores are anticipating an extra four, five, 10,000 people. Because what we really need to know is, can our health system support?
Sustain.
And the answer to that question is no. Because everybody that is in this room that has had to have serious medical attention, a serious operation, has done it somewhere else. That's not what our little rule counting is designed to do. Our hospital could handle one, two, maybe three cases. And that's not if everybody needed to be on a ventilator, but they could isolate. But after that, they don't have the ability, it's just not big enough.
One of the concerns I have among many is avoiding confusion with the public. I mean, we can take this, I've looked at a majority of county's document that was proposed, and it gets pretty complicated. It's very specific, but I'm not real sure how well we could put something like that out to the public and not just totally confuse them, frustrate them. So I guess from my perspective, it's what are these activities that we could do that's above and beyond what the state is advocating or ordered that will help protect the citizens in Fayette County? I don't know how to do that in one real, one sentence swoop. Maybe we can, but I'm just trying to think of something that's very understandable by the people, addresses the concerns that they have. The biggest concern that I have for people is very simply, you know, the part of the economy that really helps us normally is tourism. And right now, we just don't know what people are bringing into the county, or maybe already have brought. You can talk about rental cabins. Well, I mean, you have folks that probably may come up here and think it's a good time to buy property now, they're anticipating the market to go that direction. So how do you, you know, how do you address that as well? So I'm not having answers, I guess I just have questions. But I think whatever we can do, and I think from my perspective, I'm just throwing it out, probably from what I've heard at this point is, if we could do something that's very effective for two weeks, that may not eliminate what can get in here, but it may go a long ways towards keeping the numbers down. What do you think, Mr. Patterson? You have a different goal, different trajectory you want to take than that?
No, I think two weeks would be a good starting point. We could extend, or we could go ahead and take, if you want to call it a restriction or ban or whatever you want to call it at that point. But I think, you know, if you looked at areas of people coming into our county, that would be one of our heavy areas, would be the tourism aspect. Now, we have gotten already two places that we have a lot of heavy tourists that closed. We had a railroad right outside our door, and then Meseers, they are closed. So I think we've got to take a hard look, and I would say something has to be done with that area that has not been addressed yet, which is the rentals. A lot of concerns that have come from me, from our citizens on that area.
What, Ms. Dawson, what, I mean, to kind of culminate all my feelings together, it just seems to me like we probably need to look for the most effective legal step to try to head some of these things off. With a declaration, with an emergency declaration, what are some of the things we might can, because I think we all identify, the biggest thing is people coming here from other places could be one of the county's biggest problems for every bit of our infrastructure. It just seems to me like, you know, some of the most important things are school system, they send all the kids home. Some businesses, and I've been told a couple of rental agencies have already stopped, and I applaud them for doing that.
Correct.
But some of our most valuable things, our churches, we're failing, you know, we're seizing to gather together on worship days.
Correct.
There are so many things that people, that are in place now, that are very vital and important to our communities. I just, I think we need to take a very strong step, but in turn, it still has to be legal, and we still have to enforce whatever we're talking about. So I guess for my concerns, that's the step I would like to take, is the most effective. But also, whatever we do, I believe we all agree, we're going to have to be able to enforce whatever it is we come up with, or else I don't know why we would do it. And this is a situation none of us has ever faced, so it's going to be a lot of learning going along the way. Because as mentioned, there's all kinds of reasons why people would come here. And I appreciate the businesses that you mentioned that have already decided to shut down and curtail. But as in anything, there's still going to be those that are going to, we all know that people are going to travel no matter what, you know, for whatever reason. So whatever, I'm interested in, in whatever legal step we have in our authority, we get it be a strong one as well to try and help curtail some of the spread of this awful virus we're seeing.
And to go along with what Commissioner Hilton said a minute ago, you know, it's important that they understand what the message is. If we just say as commissioners, we just want people to stay at home, that's a good message. But if we also say, our rentals are still open for everybody, that is mixed messages, and we want to be clear on what the message is.
I will tell you that I had a conversation, Mr. Graham and I did, Robert Graham and I did, with Dr. Zachary Taylor, who is our North Georgia District Health Officer. And Dr. Taylor said that we should actively discourage people from visiting, that we should actively communicate that our community does not have the health resources to address a pandemic. Even though we're a tourist town, and normally we do have the infrastructure to welcome and support tourists, we don't in this type of situation. And that we've talked about different ways that we could, different ways that we could communicate this to our rental market. Obviously, our press is here, got veteran news, we've got the online social media type publications. But one thing, and I've already spoke to Ms. Jackson, that we can start doing, and I've talked to, or that we could do, I've also talked to Ms. Hackett, is that we have email addresses for lodging providers that are both members of the Chamber of Commerce and those that turn in a tax that we could, once the emergency declaration is placed, and if it includes a sheltering in place, because sheltering in place basically says, stay where you are, don't be out socializing. Now, there is a long list of things you could still do, including go for walks and hikes. But that we should communicate this to the providers to say, don't come. And that in the unfathomable possibility that somebody comes, gets sick and dies because we don't have the services, it's not, cause we didn't tell you, we don't have the services. We don't normally need them. I mean, New York City doesn't normally need a hospital ship with 4,000 beds. So it makes sense for New York City to have, to say, don't come. It makes sense for us to say, don't come.
But can we go the extra step and not have them make that decision that would not only affect them, but would affect all of our citizens here?
If you also choose to do so, then what it would be, would be a citation would be issued to the property owners, because it goes back to the property owner. And see, we have two big rental companies. One's out of Atlanta, Scaq to Blue Ridge is out of Atlanta, as I understand it, it's something called VASCA, which is out of Oregon. We would have to communicate with them via email. But it goes back to the property owner. So if, for example, I'm Lynn Dawson, I am renting 710 West First Street through VASCA. If VASCA rents it, and I get a tax report, I'm Ms. Jackson, and I get the tax report where it shows that VASCA rented this property during this period of time, the citation would actually be issued to Lynn Dawson because I'm the property owner and I am ultimately responsible, not the property management company.
Right. Because see, you bring up another point, the property company down in Atlanta, VASCA, they're not going to tell these people all the things that our hospitals aren't equipped.
You're in Texas.
They're going to say, Blue Ridge is open again, and it's mixed messages. And that concerns me. It all boils down to priorities here, okay? And our priorities can't, you know, I hate, it's going to hurt our economy. But the opposite of that is to save lives or to illness, terrible illnesses. And we've got to put that as a priority, to protect people's health and well-being.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize for interrupting. You know Gilmer passed there just about an hour ago. Okay, I figured you did, stated an emergency. Sorry, sir.
Can we do something that, start from something that's very simple, like create or cease tourism activities or actions that normally attract visitors to Fayette County, start with that, and see how much needs to be added to it without making it too confusing? Because that's really for our local citizens, I think that is the big concern, is people that are not from here, what they're bringing in.
Well, like, was it yesterday that it was pretty or day before? I can't remember. But anyway, the last pretty day we had, we had zip line companies open. We actually had people tubing down the river, okay? That was probably a little, the water's cold. But the point is, they were still here doing that. So yes, tourist activities, what you establish, what you first said, yes, we're in a state of emergency, then you could prohibit those activities. We have very few restaurants that are actually in the county. Most of them are in a city. But I have seen it two ways, just carry out only, or if you're going to serve, you have to maintain a distance of six to eight feet between people. If you're going to do carry out only because we have beer and wine in the county, I would need direction because some counties and some cities are allowing people, you couldn't buy a mug of beer, but you could buy a beer in an open can, where you normally would not be able to do that. So I would need direction as to what y'all thought about that.
Let me ask you this on, as far as doing something that has some bite to it. Are we able to enact something this short that imposes fines or penalties? Are we able to do that?
I mean, the ones I've seen, yes. I've seen Rome's, Lord, I've seen 100. But yes, the ones that have been enacted, yes, you can. It's just, it's a civil penalty, it's not a criminal penalty because we're not going to be putting people in our tails.
And I think the reason why it is, because I don't know that anyone's ever faced this before, not nationwide or worldwide or...
The last pandemic of this magnitude was 1918. People, you know, traveling from here to Atlanta was a once a year, if it happened thing. It wasn't what it is now.
Do we also take a step, and this is just throwing it out there, now people who live in this county obviously work in many places in Atlanta, there's folks back and forth. We can't disturb that. Do we have any thoughts about asking people to not vacation at other places and run the potential to bring something back here? I mean, I don't think we need to fine somebody for that, but I mean, as far as getting the message out.
Well, if you include in your state of emergency, shelter in place, then people really shouldn't be doing that. I mean, it's one thing if you have to take a family member down to Emery to the hospital. It's another thing if you just decide you want to go walk around and see what's open in downtown Marietta.
So for starters, for the beginning of the, I mean, what if we just simply listed this, tourist activities and lodging? You know, that's what we, at this point, for whatever, however long, if we're talking about two weeks or three weeks, any tourist activities or lodging for this period of time, you know, that kind of narrows it down to really fine tuning what, because as you're saying, we can't, we can't, we can't cover all of the things that people are doing, but I think it would be a good start if we send that message, any tourist activities or lodging.
If we did that, if we voted on it tomorrow at our special call meeting, for a two-week period, that would run from, what is it, on the 25th until, that'd be April 8th, April 7th?
Most things that the governor has done go through April 13th, which is Easter Monday.
We could just, yeah, we need to add that.
If you're just wanting to be consistent with what, you know, some of the other things that are going.
The holiday, we need to go past the holiday.
And that's not really, I mean, we don't start getting into peak tourism a season until June. It started to build a little bit, was, but June is when things really kick off. So even though we're hurting kind of our bread and butter out of necessity, it's not at the worst time.
And I think reasonable people can understand, I mean, there's no reason why this is going on right now, and I sometimes don't consider myself reasonable, but there's no reason right now that I would head out to Atlanta to sightsee or, you know, I mean, there's just, I think any, any of the reasonable people, business owners, travelers at this point have to understand, because it's all we've seen for weeks now, that we're not trying to do this to hurt anyone, any business or single, any, anyone out at all, it's just, it's being reasonable. The way I look at it, if our schools and churches can't meet right now, and we can't educate our kids right now, and we can't worship however we choose to, I think it's very reasonable that we cut out our tourism right now.
Yes, I agree.
So what, however we can do it legally. So you're, what we're talking about here is to enact any of this as a state of emergency would have to be.
Correct, you have to have that umbrella to give you the authority to do this.
And under a state of emergency, what happens at that point as far as our authority?
Well, once you declare a state of emergency, the ultimate authority rests with Robert Graham, because he's your EMS director. But it says in consultation, our ordinance is, our 2012 ordinance is mirrors, at least it does, and that I've looked at. I think the state came through and told everybody, you need to have something like this in place. And of course, what we were all thinking about was tornadoes, or if you're in South Georgia, hurricanes. And what? Nobody was thinking pandemic.
So elaborate on that just a little more. So Robert Graham would have final authority over all decisions, once we place our county in state of emergency?
Correct. As it, as it, not as it result, not as it applies to the road department or the sheriff's department. Any elected, it doesn't supersede any, I could come back to that. It doesn't supersede the day-to-day operations of, say, the tax commissioners or the clerk of court. Or anything that comes under this board, or the day-to-day things that come under the chair. It could, under a set of circumstances that we don't yet have. But it could, he could order the courthouse closed. He could order nobody be on the streets except between nine and six. And then only if you fall into this very limited category. We're not there, let us pray we don't get there. But to answer your question as to what could be, that could be.
But, you know, in, in, in the emergency declaration we have, I'll recite this real quickly. In section 13A, it, it kind of spells out when this is, when and if this is enacted, to preserve, protect, or sustain the life, health, welfare, and safety of persons or their property within a designated area under a declaration of emergency. It shall be unlawful for any person to travel, order, wander, stroll in or upon public streets, highways, roads, lanes, parks, and other public grounds, public places, public buildings, places of amusement, eating places, vacant lots, or any other public place during a declared emergency. Between hours specified by the chairman until a curfew is lifted. So what that is, I mean, that, that one paragraph there, I mean, that, that's kind of laying out anything.
Yes, sir.
If a curfew is imposed, correct?
Correct. But I don't, two things, you, you can put us, you need to put a sunset on yours. So if we say April 13th, if for whatever reason the federal or state government rescinded its state of emergency, that ours would be rescinded automatically. So if they got some miracle cure tomorrow. If those went away, ours would go away. If there's a need to strengthen it, you can reconvene and add two. You can reconvene and dismiss. So if you restrict tourism activities and lodging as to tourism activities, vacationing activities, which I think if you add that caveat to it, then if you have somebody that is providing overnight accommodations to somebody that is commercial, a trucker, you know, somebody that has to be here for a work-related essential purpose, you're still covered.
Yeah, he wouldn't be a tourist.
No, by definition, he wouldn't be a tourist, you're right.
Just a tourist, I mean, I think to specify what we're after, tourist covers everything that we can control anyway.
Correct.
Tourist activities and, and lodging.
Darrell, let me ask you something. If there were a curfew enacted, what would be the benefits to the emergency personnel that are having to go out? Would that impact it any?
I could say you would keep people off the streets. I mean, you're not gonna have people traveling if you put a curfew at 6 o'clock. There's not gonna be people out on the road. So yes, your access could slow down as far as people out in the community, that would slow down. If you had a curfew. And also down the road, if things should worsen and the president declared a presidential declaration, the county would have to, or won't to, declare a state of emergency, because you would need the federal funding to come in. Because that, they would open the doors for federal funding to come in, to help sustain and whatever we need to do. But it could, yes, that could, I mean.
Would it help your people, your paramedics, your emergency people, if they, if we had a curfew enacted? Would it reduce the potential exposure to them?
I think so, it would.
And you probably have some ideas on what timeframe would work better than that?
Right.
And that would be if the situation worsened in the county? I don't want to scare people half to death, is what I'm trying to say right now. What, these are preliminary talks, trying to stay ahead of what might or might not come. That's worst case scenario, correct, Darrell?
Yes, that's right.
Clearing a state of emergency in the county, that enables us to get funding from state or feds that we're not now?
Only if the president declares a presidential declaration and state, declared a state of emergency. We would borrow students of the state, and that would open up the doors for federal funding. If you had to have shelters, stop people from placing, open the door, like, down the road.
Mr. Dawson, if we had a declaration and we kept it as simple as we can, addressing the things we know, perhaps leaving that as a, and can be added as needed, instead of just trying to come through and come up with every possible scenario, which would be impossible, to have something in that declaration that would allow us, would we have to meet to add that, or would that be a situation to allow us to very quickly add those?
Well, if you wanted to add, say, for example, a curfew, and I think that Walmart right now is closing at eight or nine.
Eight thirty, I think.
Eight thirty at the grocery stores at nine. So if you added a curfew that went into effect, say, nine thirty to six. You could, it struck me to word it such that at the call or at the direction of the EMS director, a curfew could be put in place with 24 hours' notice. Because you need to let people know it's going to go into effect. Or of course, as I said, you have the right to always come back and add two as you choose. And there is, I mean, today we're good, we're sitting six feet apart except for Elaine and Jim, and that's their problem. They have to go home again. But the law, right now, we could have a call meeting and every one of us call in on a conference call. Doesn't have to be where anybody can see each other, there just has to be enough lines available for the conference call, for the press to call in if they so choose, and to have lines available for members of the public to call in and listen if they so choose. Hope it doesn't get to that, because that option's available. And the other thing is, y'all are saying simply, believe it or not, I've got the message. But every one of the, that you will find from any county, from Camden down to St. Mary's, to Fannick on the Gilmer, I think, on the Georgia-Tennessee line, has a list of wherestes. Because you have to say why it is that you're doing something that you don't normally have the authority to do. So there is nothing, when, when I was working on one for the health department for their consideration earlier today, I added a, two paragraphs. And I changed one, because right now we don't have a case. Now, I will tell you that the district health people told us that the numbers that we're looking at today on Tuesday, the 24th, are in real times the numbers for Tuesday, the 17th. The numbers that we're getting are not real-time numbers.
But the, like, the numbers I saw before this meeting all weekend long is, is right now, we're not sure of any. I mean, it's not listed on the, on the DPA, on their website, Fannick still in the white. Is that correct, Darrell? So, I mean, there could be something over right now, I'm not saying there's not, but as of right now, I just think it's, it's, it's good interest and good taste for us to be, right now, being prepared.
Absolutely. Well, one of you asked me, why should we do this? And whoever I was talking to, we laughed and said, well, last week would have been okay. Had we, had we been able to stand here last week and know what we need to do? But it's just literally changing, I mean, the Department of Revenue has now pushed out when taxes were due. That didn't happen. We've moved, today, in the state of Georgia, we've moved homestead exemption from April 1st. We have moved several other things that have to do with tax sales. We aren't doing them. So, but when I came to work this morning, that wasn't the rule.
It's a dynamic situation, it's ever-changing, day-to-day, from hour to hour.
I started saying, we don't even get a day.
Right.
Do we have enough now, I mean, of basic information here and feedback from the board to establish a document by tomorrow that addresses very simply our major concerns? Leaves it open for if we have to add additional measures? I guess the one thing we'll probably need to discuss in detail tomorrow and decide on is the timeframe. I mean, obviously, we can't start before we, if we vote on it tomorrow and approve it. But whether it's two weeks or whether it's three weeks, that's, I think that's part of, I wouldn't advise going beyond the three weeks, that April 13th timeframe.
Well, I can draft it and leave a date. You need to, I have seen some that literally went into effect the hour they were signed. So if we're meeting at four, you can make it effective at five o'clock, or if you wanna make it effective at midnight, y'all can do that. I mean, there's nothing magical, I don't think, about that.
So just correct me, commissioners, if we're, at this point, shelter in place, that's on the table to be considered?
For me, it's.
Okay, well, I, I feel that way too. How about you, Mr. Patterson? Addressing limitations on our tourism business? Is there anything else other than those two simple things that we need to try to, I mean, not simple, but those two areas there that we need to try to address?
You discussed briefly something about curfew, but we don't wanna look at that lightly at this moment.
I think that's probably a step too far. How do you feel, Commissioner?
Nah, not at this point. I mean, that's why I would, you know, of course, listen to any recommendations that come from your department. Y'all, y'all are kind of on the front line.
That would be something, yeah, we would like to, like to hear from you folks, whatever you feel like that is necessary. But regardless of the fact, I think that document that you draft, Mr. Dawson, ought to be seen by the public and others as very proactive in nature. We need to try to stay, you know, above this, this thing as much as possible. So we need to take a proactive approach, or we'll be swallowed up by it, which is what we don't want to be doing.
Anything else, Mr. Dawson?
No, I have my marching orders.
Commissioners, any further thoughts on this until we reconvene tomorrow at four o'clock?
Nah, I would just like everybody to understand how many moving parts. I mean, I think we all realize that, like I said, and I'm only talking about reasonable people here. The unreasonable people can say they were, they're going to anyway. But reasonable people, like myself, I watch, I watch three channels of news, you have to, to kind of get in the middle of the road, kind of what's really happening. It's, it's, it's funny to me of how a situation like this can come on so quickly. I think it's, it's shown all of us how, how quick things can change. I can remember when I saw my signature on the back of this when we renewed it or whatever, 2012, I was about as green here as a gourd, and I was thinking, what damn are we using this? I mean, unless it's maybe a tornado or hurricane, something down like that. So eight years later, it's just hard to believe we're sitting here even, even talking about this. And look at how fast this whole situation has escalated. It's, it's, it's beyond me how fast things can move. But I, I want all the reasonable people to understand that there's a lot of moving parts to everything that's going on right here. And those moving parts right now are having to move very quickly and adapt and try to calculate information. As I said, eight years ago, I would have never imagined us having to do this. But I hope, I hope those reasonable people out here in our community realize that we're trying to do, I, I think we're trying to do the best we can do for our citizens. Without, and to reiterate, we're not trying to hurt any business, any, anything. I don't think that's any of our intentions.
No.
I haven't heard here tonight that that's our intentions. But we do have to take some kind of measure to protect the people who live here all the time. So that's all I have.
And to add what Commissioner Johnson said, you know, reasonable people, we've got to avoid having any kind of thing that would stir up panic, because it's not a panic situation, it's to act reasonably. So that's the other thing, a lot of people, you know, may take this and run with it, we don't want that to happen. But we want it to be something that does not stir up any alarm or panic within our people here in Fannick County.
This situation is kind of like, I, I think, the best analogy I could come up with would be standing underneath Niagara Falls with a solo cup, trying to keep up with everything. Impossible. And that's, that's been, that's a struggle for all of us as community leaders and board of commissioners. I do know in our community, there's a lot of anxiety and there's a lot of fear. And we don't want that to turn to panic. We want to force, come up with measured responses that are effective, but also give people peace. I think that's what we, our, my objective is during this whole thing. And again, we apologize for the short notice of this. You know, we don't do this, this is something that's been moving very, very rapidly. And we're trying to come up with the best response, the best correct response we can, not do something that's gonna put us in the wrong, on the wrong road. So commissioners, I have nothing further to say. I would say, since we're a workshop, we don't need to ask for a dismissal. That's about all I have to say. Thank you for coming. Again, apologize for the short notice. Patrick, thank you for coming over and filling out.